We call this meeting to order. Before we get going, Mr. Duhany, you have a couple, something to bring us up to speed on.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we get going today, I wanted to give you an update on the Economic Development Department. As you all are aware, on July 24th, the former Economic Development Director announced his resignation, which is effective August 7th. We've posted a job online, and we will be conducting a national search. It has been confirmed through a comprehensive review of our department's financial records that some travel expenses do not align with our policies as such. We've reached out to the auditor, and the auditor is going to do an investigation, and he will make the investigation public to the council and the public as well. As you all know, any abuse by city staff of the privilege to travel and represent the city of Virginia Beach will not be tolerated. And we have checks and balances in place, so we are grateful that we were able to catch this before it got out of hand.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we're on the situation. Okay, Mr. Manager, we have a couple briefings.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the first person we invited by, Vice Mayor of our libraries, and the goal of this briefing is to brief council on some nighttime issues we've been having at the libraries, and a recommendation to bring forward a ordinance to the police department, enforcement authority, to address some of the issues that we've been facing in our libraries.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have my assistant Natalie Lim is going to be moving the screen for me, and I'd like to say good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council, City Manager Duhany, and City Attorney Stiles. Thank you for having me today. I'm here today to request an ordinance for libraries, which is similar to a code that is already in place for parks and recreation. It's Code 23-43, and it limits the hours. We're asking for our ordinance to limit the hours that the public can be on library grounds when we are closed. We'd like to ensure, provide a safe and welcoming environment for all users. We ask for a 30-minute exception, however, to allow visitors to be able to return materials to our book drops when we're closed, and to use our free Wi-Fi. Library and city events would also be exempt. Virginia Beach Public Library enjoys a roughly 90% approval rating per the most recent citizen survey. I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was me.
Oh, okay. That's all right. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't me.
I'll take the blame, but not the responsibility.
Okay. We have a roughly 90% approval rating in our last citizen survey. Forty-four percent responded that our services are excellent, and 46% said that they were good. We have over a million combined visits from our customers annually to one of our 10 physical locations, through our drive-throughs, online, and through our outreach services. Our dedicated staff prides ourselves on upholding the basic tenets of librarianship that welcomes all to avail themselves of our free services, regardless of their background, their information needs, or their interests. In fact, we continuously strive to remove barriers to access by eliminating overdue fines with your help in the last couple of years, and we thank you for that. We also have expanded access to free library cards. We circulate traditional materials that we all know, like books and DVDs, but we also circulate hotspots to give people internet access, and newer items like our birding kits and our surfboards. We meet customers where they are by creating library out in our communities, and providing a wide variety of programs and resources that reflects the rich cultural tapestry of this city of Virginia Beach. Libraries serve as a free and welcoming place for all to visit for any length of time during our open hours. Staff are trained to serve all our customers with empathy, fairness, and humility. However, over the recent months, we've seen an uptick of library visitors electing to remain on library grounds overnight, in our parking lots, on grounds, in the bushes, on sidewalks, entryways, and sleeping on our benches, when the library is closed, despite the services available through the city's Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Department, and our Human Services Department, and all of our other partners. Due to this behavior, libraries has faced an increasing challenge in upholding the Focus Action Plan item, Invigorate 3.21, continue public safety efforts to ensure a safe and healthy environment for residents and visitors in our library facilities. Several instances of vehicles parking overnight for weeks and months have been reported. Sometimes the vehicles are inoperable, they accumulate trash around them, and they monopolize parking spaces in the library's parking lots. Customers and staff have reported unsightly trash and makeshift bedding left on library grounds overnight. When the facilities are closed, overnight campers have no access to toilets, and customers and staff have found human waste on library grounds as well. With the uptick in this behavior, and customers urging us to remove the trash in a timely manner, as you can see here, sometimes it's fallen to library staff to step away from their traditional duties and to assist with the removal of trash and biohazards left behind on library property. One customer who had been sleeping overnight on the grounds at the Central Library reported that she was attacked by another individual when she was sleeping on grounds overnight. Despite the wonderful services that our city Housing and Neighborhood Preservation and Human Service Departments and our partners offer, many who elect to stay overnight at the library refuse service, and they elect to sleep, and/or camp, or park overnight on library grounds, where we cannot guarantee their safety. To this point, city law enforcement has been without the authority to address these issues. I'm before you today to request an ordinance to authorize police to ask those remaining overnight on library grounds to move along after a reasonable window of 30 minutes, which would allow them to return materials to our book drops, or to use our Wi-Fi. However, the police would be able to ask them to move along after about 30 minutes when our libraries are closed. So, we have the opportunity, with this ordinance, we'd have the opportunity to give our officers that authority to help maintain a welcoming and safe environment for our residents and our visitors. Individuals might more readily accept services from the city departments and our partners. And of course, all of our facilities, our drive-throughs, are open to everyone during our open hours. Our comprehensive online services remain available 24 hours daily, and all locations offer what we call a pocket pile, which is a list of resources that we give to anyone who seems to need assistance with housing or other services that the city provides. So again, I ask, and I recommend that you pass an ordinance that would allow libraries to have this ability to, for the police to ask people to move along when the library is closed, after they've been on-site for 30 minutes. And this is a draft of the ordinance. I know that's a lot on your screen, but you should have a copy in front of you. And thank you to Natalie for making sure everybody had that. You can go ahead and leave that, Natalie, but next I'll just entertain any questions, and mostly with Mr. Duhany's assistance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions on this? Yeah, Worth.
Mayor, just to ask the question, legally, are we, if this is passed, this is legally permissible?
Yes, the Police Department and libraries and Housing, Neighborhood, Preservation work with the Law Department of putting this together. And currently, right now, there have been some situations on library properties where we've tried to, you know, work with folks, give them outreach, and connect them with services, and they've refused to leave. And this will give the Police Department the authority to, after we try empathy and wraparound services and connection to outreach, if they refuse to leave, this gives them the authority to move them along, similar to what we do in our parks, and also like on Boardwalk and things like that.
Okay, Hutch, and then Josh.
You might have just answered it. I guess I was feeling that our PD could move people off of city property anywhere, anytime, if it was deemed appropriate. Is that, because I'm betting there's a lot of folks that are watching this who would have thought the same thing I did. What's the answer there?
Well, certain public areas are open generally to the public 24 hours a day. The public's got to be put on notice of where they can be and where they can't be. If a location is closed to the public, even though it's otherwise a public place, and it's posted and notified as such, then it's the same as a private property owner who's posted their property. Anyone remaining is essentially trespassing.
So, just common sense almost, right? Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
I don't remember to find that.
I hear you. Wrong thing to say. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for your work on the draft ordinance, and to put the issue in front of us. And I am supportive of this, considering the concerns that you've raised, and, you know, just generally speaking, you know, I know our city library properties are unique in many ways, but I know we're experiencing this issue on other city-owned properties and in public places. So, you know, just even as recently as last week, I know, you know, Mr. Manager, and Mr. City Attorney, and a couple fellow council members, you know, we've talked about these issues. You know, they've gotten pretty pronounced, particularly in town center, and I know the resort has had, you know, its challenges as well. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is, and I don't know how we might go about having a conversation around some solutions here, and recognizing, I guess, first and foremost, the humanitarian issue that it is. We've got to be, you know, we're a compassionate city, and it is certainly not a crime to be unhoused, but I think the public does have, and families do have, you know, an expectation, and I think it's a reasonable one, that they should be able to go about in public spaces, and not be confronted with some of the things that we're seeing. So, I would just, you know, I know that's separate and aside from what we're talking about right here, but I would really welcome a conversation and some additional, you know, education and dialogue around the table in terms of what kind of tools we have available to us.
Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. To clarify, so, part A of the draft ordinance, it says, if someone is found on the grounds between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, they shall be guilty of misdemeanors and subject to a fine. So, is the penalty for this, it would be a fine only, or would it be arrest?
The violation of this ordinance would be a fine. Continued failure to comply could bring into play other ordinances which could justify arrest.
And Councilmember Rouse, I just want to clarify as well. Our police department, I mean, we're doing better than most, but our police department's short of staff, right? So, our police department, they're not driving down and doing patrols looking for this, right? This is literally going to be the situations where we get significant amount of complaints, and the police department is always going to try to come and get people to move along. But if they end up in a situation of non-compliance, this is an extra tool to kind of help move people along. The one primary example is, if you go back to the vehicle that was there, the SUV that was there, that was on-site for several weeks, and there was a family living in there, and they were using the bathroom, and the vehicle went dumping it out on the city property, and then that was impacting the quality of the experience of the families and the students that were using the libraries. We've exhausted every effort with our Human Services Team and our Housing Homeless Task Force, and they wouldn't move along, right? You know, eventually, after several weeks, we're able to get them to finally take us, take us up on some of the wraparound services, but this would allow us to, after we've exhausted those efforts, the police department will be able to still continue to nudge them, but also give them an extra enforcement tool to get them to move along quicker.
Just, I don't know if you've been, who would collect this information, or like, if y'all have it already, but I would like to know if they're, if we can dig a bit deeper about the refusal of services. So, what's behind, if we're offering resources, and people are denying it, I'd like to understand what's behind that.
Yeah. We can give you, we can, see if we can put together a report of what typically we get, but a lot of it, we end up with, there's mental illness associated with it, but then there's also the fact that some folks are comfortable living outside and don't want to live inside of an institution. And sometimes if there's substance abuse, when you go inside a facility, you can't drink, you can't use drugs, and if there's addiction there, they don't want to go into a facility, because that means they won't be able to take care of the addiction. So, it's a very nuanced situation as well. And then there's also, sometimes there's a couple relationships, you know, and unless you are a family, you know, it's hard for you to use the place, because we only have so many spaces defined for families, right? So, some people don't want to spend a night apart from a pet or a loved one.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else at this point? Amelia?
I just wanted to say thanks for taking this step, and maybe if you can put it, break down this ordinance into a few simple, easy-to-read, that you can place it somewhere, where they even come in, so they are aware there is an ordinance, and citizens.
Yes, we're asking for new signage.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? You know, I think this is ultimately a matter of public safety, you know, in terms of, you know, not putting an environment that could be at risk. At this point, is anybody object to moving forward with your ordinance?
Mayor, I don't have an objection, but could I make a comment?
You sure can.
I just want to build on Mr. Schulman's comments previously, and I want to thank you for your presentation. What I think this represents is a symptom of a larger community issue that we face. We've been on break for the last, I guess, almost month, and in the course of the last several weeks, I've had no shortage of probably approaching 10 individual issues related to people who are unhoused, and other behavioral issues, such as what you described in neighborhoods, and on city property, other types of city properties, and have been informed consistently about the impact that this behavior has on quality of life, on property value, and on public safety. And I'm happy to support this ordinance, and I also think it's incumbent upon us as a council, and even broader than that, as a community, to find ways to address this behavior. Both the, of course, the root cause of what brings people to this situation, mental illness, and economic issues, and others, but also, just as in the parking lots of public libraries, in neighborhoods, in other public spaces, the people that I serve and have heard from have an expectation of safety and security in their homes, in their neighborhoods, where they shop, where they visit, in their churches. And so, I think that what you're bringing to us today is very important, but I only think it's just, and I know that's your lens, for sure, and I understand and respect that, but it's just a small piece of what I'm seeing in the community of the impact that these types of behaviors are having on our community, and we need to do something about it. I'm not sure exactly what that is, and we need to look at best practices, we need to look at what other cities are doing, we need to think about what's best for us, but we have to take action, because just as I mentioned, in the last couple of weeks, there is issue after issue after issue, and people are tired of it. We need to do something. Thank you, sorry, Mayor.
Okay, Sabrina, then, first.
Certainly, you know, from me, before moving forward with an ordinance, I'd like to understand a little bit more about, you know, as was mentioned with Councilmember Rouse, the refusal of services and why. And then also, you know, in terms of having available beds, if, do we have available beds? If, you know, folks are looking for somewhere to sleep, and if they're, you know, not involved in other issues, but are there available beds for them to go to? Is there a place for them to go to? Just even considering, I know the libraries, I've seen folks go there just to get relief, whether it's from the heat, or it's from cold weather. And the library, especially the one at Oceanfront, has always been seen as a place for them to go and get some type of relief. And I don't know if that's, you know, certainly a part of this whole situation. Certainly, it is very concerning about the biohazards, the trash, the physical attacks, but, which has, it's been mentioned that this is a symptom of a larger issue that we, I think we need to have a broader discussion about, and find better solutions to address it. Certainly, I'm also concerned, too, in terms of the fines. I know it doesn't, certainly it's not accompanied with certainly arrest, but I'm also sensitive towards certainly criminalization, finding folks who are actually presenting as being homeless, and have mental health needs and concerns, and try to figure out how to maybe perhaps triage that in another way versus finding someone who probably, most likely, won't be able to pay it anyway. But then, also looking at other levels, because there are certainly different levels, I'm sure of what you've seen. Now, you might see a level of someone who's in a vehicle, who's been staying there for a while, that you certainly have told, listen, move on, you can't stay here, that's certainly different than someone who perhaps may have mental health issues, need services, and other individuals, and their specific cases. So, certainly, very concerning to me, and would like to have perhaps a broader discussion and more information on what's actually going on here, and how better to serve folks who are in this situation.
Yeah, but then I think, you know, at least we should at least go forward with, you know, bringing it forward, and then we can certainly engage the public, you know, during the process, flush a lot of this stuff out. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to reflect that I'm not comfortable with moving forward without that information that I've just requested.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we do end up moving forward, and an ordinance is passed, I would be interested in, maybe a year from the date of passage, to come back with some reporting in terms of how it's been implemented, if there's been any success, and how many fines, if any, have been issued, and whether or not they've been paid, and sensitive, of course, on the issue of trying to, you know, institute a fine on somebody who doesn't have the means to pay for it. So, if there's, you know, instead of a fine, maybe community service that involves picking up some of these items at our, you know, in our parks, or, you know, other places to kind of help reinforce and educate, I'm open to any and all of that, but I do, I am supportive of this.
Yes, Mayor.
Also did hear another additional request from council on this as well, is that they would like for us to bring forward a briefing on kind of how we address homelessness in the city as it relates to like encampments, and folks that are on city property and not, you know, moving along after outreach and notices and stuff like that. So, I can, we can get staff to put together some kind of briefing.
You think we can put that on the agenda for next week?
Probably give us about three or four weeks, probably about two or three weeks, Mayor, we probably get something to you all.
And I think that's important with that new court case and the ruling.
Yep, the grand pass law.
That affects things as well.
Yeah, I think that'll be good, too, as well, because we've been getting some of the similar comments that some folks in the community are feeling that law has changed how we can do enforcement, and you'll find from that, there's a narrow scope of what that law provides, but then it'd also be helpful for us to illuminate to the council and the public how our encampment task force addresses encampments throughout the city. You know, they use a very empathetic approach, but also, they do emphasize as well that after we've exhausted the ability for outreach and for getting folks into the services, there's going to be a sense of enforcement as well, to kind of ensure that we can not disturb the quality of life of our residents and our businesses.
Okay, Chris?
And this was, I know, not on the agenda, but we're here. As part of this discussion, can we have Parks and Rec? Because one of the main components I hear when we, as council members, complain or put forth, I guess the issue is that Parks and Rec has a cleaning schedule, a trash pickup schedule, and it's based on our mowing. So, if we're going to really look at this holistically, I think Parks and Rec has to be part of the conversation, because oftentimes it's on property that they're maintaining. So, I'd love for that to be a component, because it's, I know the complaints that I've put forth, the feedback I've gotten is, well, that's on the mowing schedule, we won't get there until this date, and meanwhile, the residents of that community have to look at trash, bean bags, so on and so forth.
So, sorry, we've gotten all over the board here now. It's, part of it, we have a task force, correct? Where, you know, I've said many times in the fire department, we were friendly, fair, and firm. You know, that's how we try to be. And then at some point, you get through the friendly and the fair, and you got to be firm, right? So, and then the numbers, you know, we didn't really see, I mean, are we talking two, three? Are we talking two or three dozen? You know, how are we looking at that? And I guess, like I said again, as a citizen, I just thought, if you're on city property, then you can be asked to move along if you're not supposed to be here, and it's not a 24-hour place. So, some new, you know, every, I think a lot of people are probably learning, there's some different, some nuances here, as Councilman Berluci said. So, yeah, I don't know, this feels like all of a sudden, we've got a much bigger thing going on. So, not sure I helped you.
Well, as part of that presentation, the Law Department will kind of explain what got passed from the Supreme Court, and then also some of the legal challenges we face with trying to address the unhoused on city property. You know, we don't have a lot of the same flexibility as a private resident has, or private property has, where if you're trespassing, you know, there's some, there's a significant amount of limitations on how we have to address that as on public property, and it requires us to have due process or some kind of noticing before we can actually get people to leave public property where it's not clearly authorized. You know, like Parks, for example, Parks says at dusk, you need to leave, and there's a city law that supports that, so we can have people move. It gets complicated if the individuals are unhoused. And then to Mrs. Wooton's point, if we don't have bed space, then you run into another layer of process. If you're telling people they can't stay there, and sleeping is a required biological function, and we don't have any alternative for them, then you run into complications. So, it's layered, it's layered, and it triggers a bunch of things depending on the situation.
Okay. Anyone else at this point? I think, you know, one of the things that we're wrestling with, this is a national crisis that's happening in every city right now. A couple of years ago, I met with the mayor of Ocean City, and, you know, they had some really significant problems. And, you know, but I'll tell you what, you know, the one thing about Virginia Beach is that we have been, you know, over the years, so proactive, you know, in addressing it, but it, you know, it's a tough situation, because we're trying to help people that may not want help. And we have PTSD veterans, and, you know, things of that nature, and, you know, but, you know, be assured going forward, I'm sure we will continue to use the empathy and compassion that we traditionally have. Thank you. All right. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Carrie Bookhold from our planning department will come and give city council an overview of the pending planning items that will come before you at your future council meetings.
Welcome.
Thank you. Make sure the slides are... Let me check. It's on. Now we're rolling. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm here to run through the pending planning items on your agendas for both August 13th and August 20th. There's a total of 14 items to be heard in the month of August. One item is for this afternoon, and the remaining items are on August 20th. Item number one is a street closure application that will close just over 6,300 square feet of an unimproved roadway on Windsor Road between two homes at 1217 and 1223 North Bay Shore Drive. A recent update to this application today, the applicant requested deferral to the September 17th hearing to allow for additional time to discuss the application with an adjacent property owner, as well to allow for a clerical error that staff had on the adjacent property owner notifications that were sent out ahead of today's meeting. So again, they're requesting deferral to September 17th. I'll skip over this slide, so we can present accurate information to you on September 3rd, ahead of your September 17th meeting. This is a summary of the items that you will hear at your August 20th hearing. There are 13 total items to be heard on August 20th. Item number one for the 20th is a conditional rezoning request for property located northeast of Nemo Parkway and south of Painter's Lane in District 5. The applicant is proposing to rezone the 28,000 square foot property from agricultural to conditional R10 residential to create two single-family lots where one lot exists today. Access to the site will be from Painter's Lane. The site lies entirely within the 65 to 70 decibel noise zone in Sub Area 2, which requires the density of the proposed project to be at or lower than the adjacent densities surrounding the property. The proposal was reviewed by the Joint Review Process Group to include the Navy, and they determined that the proposed density of 3.1 units per acre, even though there are only two lots here, was in conformance with our ACU's ordinance. This image shows the existing house that is on the property today. This will remain on proposed Lot B. There are proffers included for Lot A that speak to the minimum size of the property, a 2,200 square foot home, and the use of premium exterior finishes. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request, and the Planning Commission voted to approve the application by a vote of 10 to 0. Items number two and three are a request for conditional rezoning in a subdivision variance south of Virginia Beach Boulevard and east of Nor- North Fur Avenue in District 4. The applicant is requesting a conditional rezoning of parcels totaling 0.44 acres from deep B2 community business and R5 residential to a conditional B4 mixed-use development. A subdivision variance is also proposed. The property is currently developed with a vacant restaurant building and an existing single-family residence. The applicant proposes a four-story mixed-use building on the property with retail on the ground floor and two stories of apartments above. The top floor is used for recreational space and a recreational deck. While the property is not located within the strategic growth areas, it is in between the Pembroke and the Rosemont SGA's, and the site has been designed utilizing those strategic growth area design criteria with reduced setbacks. So they are seeking a variance to the front yard setback to 10 feet and the side yard setback adjacent to the street to 5 feet. There are 26 parking spaces proposed to accommodate both the retail and residential uses and eight biking space, bike spaces proposed. As mentioned, the applicant is also requiring, requesting a variance to the subdivision ordinance. Since this is both used for residential and commercial use, they have to adhere to the commercial dimensional standards. So they are deficient, they are deficient by 80 feet in their lot width, deficient in their lot frontage by 40 feet, and deficient by just over 20,000 square feet in their lot area. The proposed building exterior will consist of a neutral palette with brick veneer, fiber, cement panels, and glass. At the tallest point, the building is 44 and a half feet tall, which is up close to Virginia Beach Boulevard, and it scales back to 33 and a half feet as you get closer to the residential district. The four-story office building will be comprised, again, first floor retail, second and third floor will be used for apartment units, eight total units, four units on each floor, and the fourth floor, fourth floor will provide amenity space to the residents, including a rec room, storage, and an amenity deck. At the time of the Planning Commission hearing and when this presentation was drafted, there was one letter of opposition from an adjacent neighbor with concerns about property values. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to support the application.
Yes. Across the street from District 8, and in reviewing the documents, it appears the applicant did reach out to Thalia Civic League on their own and presented a three-story proposal, not a four-story. And so when you're reviewing the documents, it'll say that the applicant had support from Thalia Civic League, that support has been withdrawn. There is also overarching concern that this building is in a non-SGA area, although between two. And in speaking to Dr. Dolmatt, who owns the chiropractor's office next door, he was under the impression it was also three stories until recently contacted. So I will be meeting with the community in District 8. If you go back to the map, ma'am, if you could, you'll see Thalia Road right there. That is the beginning of District 8, and so all of that community, Stein Hilbers, all of those homes will, that's their only way to exit unless they would take a right down Eddingburg and go further east. And so I understand it's in between two SGA's, but this would be setting a precedent for future buildings. If any of you want to drive down that area, there's nothing in that vicinity that looks anything close to this. And so we will be meeting over the next week, I guess, because there was some misrepresentation in terms of to the community, and there are no other four-story buildings. I did ask for a mix of the apartments. They are eight two-bedroom apartments, but the notes indicate that there will only be one student. I don't know how they predicted that, in a, in an elementary system that is already right below capacity. So there are some concerns. I don't know if there's any workforce or affordable housing, but this is not in the SGA, it's just in between two. And so I'll be looking into this. You'll hear more this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, I want to offer a point of clarification about the three or four-story issue, because I do understand that the building itself, nothing changed about the plans that were submitted, so.
That's correct.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of this is that it's a three-story building with the fourth floor being categorized for open recreation space as well as storage on the top level. Not sure exactly what that storage looks like, but it's basically a three-level office and residential building, and then your office required that the, all of the fourth floor?
We do.
And so I think that was the misunderstanding that occurred between Civic League and the applicant, the representatives for the applicant. But I, I do think it's worth pointing out as a, just for more information and clarification on this topic, that the plans didn't change. So I, I don't think the representation of the Civic League, that it was three stories and then it changed to four, was in bad faith in any way. I think they, their plans have been consistent throughout. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our office did require that they labeled the drawing as a four-story building. Only three of the stories will be occupied. The fir, the fourth would be occupied intermittently for the recreational space, the storage space. There is also building support up there for mechanical equipment, and then again, the roof deck.
Okay, Chris and Amelia, just another point of clarification, because I've spoken to the Civic League. I'm not sure, Michael, if you've actually spoken to them, but can you go to the next graphic? They were only provided this graphic. If you go to the next graphic, this actually shows elevation. So from the previous graphic, if you couldn't miscarry, you cannot tell it's four stories. And if you look at that small box right between the tan and the brown, it says four stories. It wasn't until a month later that staff required the applicant to turn that to four stories. So they did not present that to the Civic League, and therefore, without, move forward one, this wasn't presented to the Civic League. So I guess they would have to guess from an overhead view with no language that it would be a four-story. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just making the point, Mayor, if I could, the plans haven't changed. There may have been more information, and I certainly think that's part of the planning process, and the Civic League, of course, has every right to continue to be engaged and express their point of view. I just don't want it represented that, to the community at large, that plans changed on the go and that one version was presented to the Civic League that then changed, because that's not actually the case.
Correct.
Amelia?
I'm in agreement with what Councilman Berluci is saying, and I did talk with the developers and so forth, and it seems to be a contextual verbiage. But if Councilman Taylor is reaching out, it will be good. I would recommend that, and I'll come as well as some of you.
Sure.
Explain that to the Civic League, so they understand there hasn't been a real change, just a verbal contextual. I've looked at that, and I'm comfortable with it.
Right, we're happy to do that.
So at least they could come and answer some of the questions, Councilman Taylor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh. Wait, I'm sorry, Rosemary.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
How high is this building?
It's 44 and a half feet at the front, and then it scales back to 33 and a half feet at the back, where it's adjacent to residential.
Josh?
That was going with my question. Is it adjacent to residential? I see maybe a couple homes on the, on the southeast side.
In the south and in the rear, and there's some category four and one landscaping proposed to buffer in between those uses.
Okay, and I, I just, and it, and it, it's important, because I know, I know the folks from the neighborhood come from the north to pull out, but is this, is, is this part of the Civic League? Do we know? Is it?
It is not part of the Thalia Civic League.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No, I just, I was wondering, that's all. Yeah?
Okay, move on.
Moving on. Item number four is in District 10, and this is an applicant that's requesting a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage on Chandler Creek Road. The applicant intends to use three existing units totaling 4,500 square feet in an industrial condominium building for the repair garage. This applicant currently operates an automobile repair garage, Caliper Collision, which is further down Chandler Creek Road, and intends to use this new location as an overflow work area. There's no outdoor storage here. The vehicles will be stored in the bays. All work will be performed inside. Each bay can hold two cars, so there can be up to eight vehicles at this location and up to five technicians. The site is within the 70 to 75 decibel noise zone, and so automobile repair garages are considered a compatible use. This proposal is consistent with other industrial uses within the industrial park. There are no alterations proposed to the building. Sufficient parking is met on site. There were five letters of support received, and there's no known opposition. Planning Commission voted 9 to 0 with one abstention to recommend approval. Item number five is an application to request a change in nonconformity to alter and expand an existing dwelling within the Cavalier Shores neighborhood in District 5. I'm sorry, District 6. Both the lot and the existing dwellings are nonconforming with current standards in the zoning ordinance. The main dwelling and the small cottage on this site date back to 1949, and both are identified as contributing resources to the Cavalier Shores neighborhood. Like most of the properties in Cavalier Shores, this was developed prior to the adoption of any zoning ordinance, and there are several existing nonconformities associated with this property, including two dwelling units on one property. There's a single-family house and a very small cottage, and they are deficient in their setbacks and dimensional standards. Of the existing nonconforming dimensional standards, only one, the front yard setback will be intensified to 15 and a half feet. The reduction in this setback is the result of proposed porch steps on the north elevation. The remainder of the existing nonconformities will remain the same. The applicant intends to construct new porches to wrap the north and east elevations and construct a new two-story addition at the rear of the building. The overall design of the addition draws from the existing house and the other dwellings within the neighborhood, and is compatible with the existing character of Cavalier Shores. Staff received two letters of support. There's no known opposition. Planning Commission recommended approval of the application by a vote of 10 to 0. Item number six is a modification of conditions to a previously approved conditional use permit for an indoor recreational facility at the Salem Crossing Shopping Center in District 7. The applicant intends to use the entirety of a previous Kroger training facility as an indoor trampoline park and arcade. The size of the facility will grow from just over 18,000 square feet to over 55,000 square feet. The proposed hours stagger from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM Monday through Thursday, noon to 11:00 on Fridays, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Saturdays, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Sundays. There's no change to the overall size of the shopping center. No additional parking is required, and sufficient parking is on site. No exterior changes except for signage. There's no known opposition, and Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote 10 to 0. Item number seven is a request for a conditional use permit to operate an automobile repair garage in existing buildings at 212 South Gate Avenue in the adjoining parcel to the south located in District 4. Both parcels are zoned industrial, and the proposed repair garage is a very small operation and will service approximately three to five vehicles per day. The hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through, Monday through Friday. The employees include the repair garage owner and his wife, and occasionally they contract employees for assistance, and they contract up to two employees at a time. It should be noted, this property is within the Central Village District, which is a sub-area defined in the Pembroke SGA. The applicant is familiar with the overall recommendations of this area to transition away from auto-centric uses and the pending Cleveland Street CIP. They intend to use this site as is, understanding that they may only operate here for a short time. The applicant is also requesting deviations to the landscaping requirements for foundation and parking lot landscaping, since they will only be operating here for a few short years. Since the use is not compatible with the long-term vision of the area, staff is recommending a condition for the CUP to expire within five years after approval, and the applicant is agreeable to this condition. Staff has not received any opposition of this request, and Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval. Item number eight is a street closure request for a portion of the platted unnamed and unimproved alley adjacent to the rear lot line of 817 Vanderbilt Avenue in District 5. This request is to close a seven and a half foot, seven and a half foot portion totaling 375 square feet of the alley. The site is currently developed with a single-family home and a fenced back, fenced back in, fenced backyard. The applicant has a rear deck they plan to reconstruct, and they are going to incorporate this closure area into their lot and help, it will help them meet the 20-foot rear yard setbacks. A viewers' meeting was held on June 3rd to consider the request. Public Works is requesting a drainage unit be established over the entire closure area. The applicant is agreeable to this request. We've received one letter of support. There is no known opposition, and Planning Commission had a unanimous vote to recommend approval. Item number nine is a request for a conditional use permit for an assembly use at the Pembroke Lake Shopping Center in District 9. The applicant is proposing to operate an event venue rental space that's just over 1,000 square feet in an existing building on site. The applicant intends to limit the number of guests to no more than 49 people. However, the maximum occupancy will be set at 49 or below by the building official or the fire marshal. Per the zoning ordinance, since this site is classified as a shopping center, it has a minimum parking requirement of 45 spaces. There are only, I'm sorry, 44 spaces. There are only 35 spaces on the property. Based on this, the applicant submitted a parking study that contends there is sufficient parking on the site, based on the typical hours of operation for the various tenants within the building. The zoning administrator remove, reviewed and approved the parking study with limited hours of operation of the assembly use to ensure the peak hours of the assembly use were not, would not overlap with the other users in the center. The hours of operation proposed here are 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM Monday through Friday, and noon to midnight Saturday and Sunday. There are no exterior changes except for signage proposed. There are no exterior changes except for signage proposed and staff has not received any opposition to the request. Planning Commission voted nine to zero with one abstention to recommend approval. Item number.
Josh?
I'm sorry?
Thank you. I'm, I'm very familiar with this property and I'm very familiar with how tight the parking areas are. There's only really two ways into the, into the center. And if you're, if you're going along that north side by Pembroke Boulevard, you've got to actually kind of U-turn to get out of there. I could, I could see a situation where it'd be very tempting for folks to use that Wells Fargo to the east as overflow parking. I just, I have overall parking concerns about this. I'd love to see the parking study and the applicant has not reached out to me. So if you could place me in touch with them, I'd appreciate it.
We'll certainly do that.
Thank you.
Item number ten is a subdivision variance request on Buzzard Neck Road in District Two. This is a proposed two-lot subdivision and the proposed Lot One will serve as the home site for an existing home that is already on the property and has been on the property since nineteen fifty-seven. This six-point-three acre lot will be completely within the floodplain, subject to special restrictions, where the zoning ordinance does not allow us to include that area within the, the minimum lot area or with calculations. Therefore, the lot would be considered to have a zero-foot lot size and a zero-foot lot frontage, necessitating the need for the variance. Proposed Lot Two, on the other hand, meets the minimum zoning requirements for non-residential dwellings, or I'm sorry, non-residential uses. It has a six-hundred-and-thirty feet of frontage on Buzzard Neck and five-point-three acres outside of the floodplain, subject to special restrictions. The owner is removing a vacant, single-family dwelling on Proposed Lot Two to ensure that this application meets the density requirements of one house per lot in the agricultural district. A condition has been included to ensure that Lot Number Two is used as a non-residential use only. As I mentioned, this home was construction, constructed in nineteen fifty-seven, which was prior to the implementation or any regulations surrounding floodplain, subject to special restrictions, which has made altering the boundaries of this lot difficult. The condition, a condition has been recommended that any replacement or redevelopment happening on Lot One in the future would have to adhere to the floodplain ordinance or require a floodplain variance. At this time, there are no improvements or no changes proposed to the existing structure. There is no known opposition to this request and the Planning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. Item number eleven is much like item seven, where the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile repair garage at the existing buildings at two twenty-nine South Gate Avenue. The parcel is zoned industrial and is in District Four. The hours of operation are proposed eight A M. to five-thirty P M. Monday through Saturday. The business will employ up to four employees and will conduct motor vehicle repair only. There is no towing on this site despite the name of the business. The space exists for foundation landscaping to be added and trees to be added to the site and the applicant has agreed to install those landscaping items to improve the aesthetics. As mentioned for item seven, the property is within the Central Village District and this use is not considered what we would envision for the long-term vision of the, of the plan of the area. So the applicant is agreeable to a five-year expiration date on the CUP. Staff has not received any opposition to this request and Planning Commission did vote nine to zero with one abstention to recommend approval. Item number twelve is a street closure request for the western half of a fifteen-foot unimproved lane in the western half of an unimproved portion of Holly Road adjacent to three hundred Bay Colony Drive in District Six. This item was deferred at your July ninth hearing. The applicant is seeking to incorporate the highlighted portions, just totaling over forty-two hundred square feet, into their adjoining lots. A viewers' meeting was held on April twenty-fifth to consider their request and the viewers determined that the proposer, the proposed closures would not result in any public inconvenience and deemed the closure to be acceptable. A condition has been recommended by staff to maintain a public utility and access easement over the total closure area and that there could be no encroachment of private property within this easement. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the application. Planning Commission voted ten to zero with one abstention to recommend approval of the request. Finally, item thirteen is a conditional use permit request for a car wash facility at the corner of Holland Road and South Plaza Trail in District Ten. This item was also deferred at your previous July ninth hearing. The applicant is proposing to reuse an existing Rite Aid building and convert it to a car wash facility. Improvements to the site include a new pedestrian connection from Holland Road into the interior of the Timberlake Shopping Center and increased landscaping throughout the site. A total of twenty-five vacuum stations are proposed, eight of which will be located inside the building and seventeen will be located on the exterior. Overhead garage doors will be added to the primary elevation as well as the southern elevation to allow for ingress and egress into the facility. While the applicant has worked very closely with staff to incorporate the recommended improvements to the site and the structure, staff is recommending denial of this request due to the incompatibility with the comprehensive plan recommendations for the area specifically found in the June twenty-twenty-three adopted Commercial Area Pattern Book, which identify the Timberlake Shopping Center as an aging shopping center that is prime for redevelopment into a mixed-use center. The pattern book specifically calls out the importance of out parcels such as this one to be the faces of redevelopment in an extension of the neighborhood. Staff has not received any opposition to this request and the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of the application by eight to three. I will note that Hank Morrison, our Comprehensive Planning Administrator, will be here next week to give you a deeper dive into the details of the Commercial Area Pattern Book. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I stand by for any questions.
Okay, any questions at all on anything? Okay, thank you very much. Very well, you folks do a great job. Okay, we're going to move on to liaison reports and we're going to start with Vice Mayor on a very important topic.
Well, as you know, we've all been on recess, but that doesn't mean we have not been working. I know everybody around this table has been working these past couple of weeks, even though we have not been all together in this room. And I wanted to sort of report to you about the Aquarium Liaison, which were by the council. And what we've been doing these past few weeks. We, we had two meetings with the leadership of the aquarium and we, the first meeting, it was the mayor and I were there and we came to some agreements, but it wasn't quite the way I think everybody wanted it to be. So we had another meeting as fresh as this morning and we've, we've got a joint statement that, my understanding, that the leadership of the aquarium and the liaisons, which is Worth, Remick and I were there this morning, are agreeable to and we're hoping that this will be something that the council will, will find. It's a good path forward. Let, let me just read it to you. The Aquarium Foundation has indicated the desire to explore the possibility of amending the partnership with the city where it takes on more of an operational and financial role in the day-to-day operation of the aquarium and planning for its future in a way that provides budget certainty for taxpayers. To fully explore this possibility, we are asking council to stop the alternative ownership model exercise with outside third parties. The intent moving forward would be city staff, council liaisons and the foundation working collaboratively on the following, which will be memorialized in the mind of understanding. So these are the three points that we really would like to cover. One is to review the city's and the foundation's financial information to get a more accurate financial picture of the Virginia Aquarium's operation and work to identify operation efficiencies for implementation. Two is to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the aquarium facilities, including the exhibits. And three, to seek federal and state funding to support the aquarium operations and/or capital needs to move forward. We really don't know the condition of the building. It needs to be assessed and this will give us a better idea of exactly where it is. So we thought this was good progress, that we were able to come together and, and agree on, on these things and present it to the council and, and hope that you agree as well. Worth, would you like to say something?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you. And I think that does summarize it. Well, I just want to remind the public that this is a forty-year partnership, public-private partnership between the city and the great aquarium. It's a shining star of the city and I think all parties agree that we want to keep it that way and we want to invest in it. We need to assess where it is physically and fiscally. But the intent of this is to try to come to terms and with some solutions that will address the issues that the aquarium asked us about last year. So I think we should try this and I'm in support.
And I'd like to say one more thing, that I know everyone on this table cares about the aquarium and wants the best thing for it. And so we think that this would be a good path. And Dan Peterson, who's the president of the foundation, would like to come before us. He can't do it next week. He's traveling, but he's going to get on our calendar in the next few weeks to be able to come and so that you can ask him yourself some of the questions that I'm sure are. But we're, I, I think this is a, a good path for all of us to. We've been a partnership. This whole, this was one of the first public-private partnerships the city has done. And I think this would be really great to keep our partnership together and keep the aquarium and to be able to move forward in a, in a very complimentary fashion. So I hope that you'll support this. I think, I'm supportive, I think it's a really great thing.
Good, Worth?
Thank you, Mary Dyer.
Well, that you brought this up because, yes, we were on recess. However, meetings were taking place and just as a member of the body, I would hope next time you'd let us know because when there's an article published and only, and there's three council members quoted in the article, it's, it's confusing, especially when the article gets it wrong and they have someone saying that the manager's going to guide us. That's not how it works in a council manager form of government. So I have a couple of questions. Some of the points you just brought up, Vice Mayor, we talked about prior to you really leading the, the charge to go in this direction. On June fourth was the last time we've discussed this. I asked Councilman Remick the morning of the article why he was asked to not attend the meeting. Still haven't got an answer on that other than it was Mayor Dyer that made that request and had the councilman who was appointed to be a liaison not acquiesce to the mayor's request to not go to the meeting. He wouldn't have had to go to a meeting this morning to get caught up and you all would have had to make a public notice. And so not only did the public not know that you all were having these meetings, we didn't know as council members. And then there's an article with three of you being quoted that were taking a direction that we're not. So can you please answer why we went in this direction? Why we spent a hundred and six thousand dollars to bring in R S and S? Why we had a meeting where we all sat at this table and said, this is the direction we're going in as a body, even though some of us didn't want to? Why did we receive a timeline in the presentation that said what was going to take place? None of that has taken place. And to add a little icing on top of this cupcake, July twenty-ninth, we get an email from Lyndon Remus that says he can't really do the audit and that he'll be before us on September third. So I hope Mr. Peterson can get here before the third, when we're going to hear from our auditor that he couldn't complete a full due diligence because Dan Peterson, Chair of the Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center Foundation, my request for data from the foundation has been denied. So I'm supposed to believe that because you all had two meetings, none of which we were made aware of. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to go down this new path and we've spent a hundred and six thousand dollars of taxpayer money. We've brought in subject matter experts that, based upon the questions I asked them, are not subject matter experts because they haven't really worked with that many aquariums. So Mayor Dyer, since you are a leader, can you please just help?
I'd be glad to.
Me understand.
I'd be glad to. In my career, both as a council person and as mayor, people request a meeting with me and I meet with them. And in this particular case, I was asked by the people in the aquarium and the foundation if I would attend a meeting, you know, to, you know, discuss some preliminaries. Now, we have the three-person rule, which we observe. And, you know, let me just say, you know, you know, Mr. Taylor, that I was the mayor that implemented the council liaison reports and discussions. So when we do have these type of meetings, we can bring them forward and we can be transparent about exactly what's going on. And the thing is that, you know, this was a very emotional subject for many that, you know, people want to get some resolve on it. And I will say that it was, you know, it was always the intent of this, you know, for me and I believe everybody else and the sustainability and viability and long-term success of the, of the, you know, the aquarium. Yeah, you know, forgive me, I got a little, I'm getting over a little flu. You know, it was, you know, the intent of it. And then, you know, once we had the preliminary meeting and we had some at least base discussions promoting understanding. Please understand, we did not make any decisions at, at the meeting I was at and I'm sure where Worth or at. And that's why we're here. And once again, there was a lot of clarification that was needed going forward. I think what the initial was a sticker shock that we had as a council when they came up and said, well, we need perhaps two to three hundred million dollars at a time where our capital improvement budgets are stretched. And the thing is that right now, you know, okay, we did have the meetings and the Vice Mayor and Mr. Remick at a legal meeting with the, the folks came back with some recommendations that the council will address. But this was a very, you know, complex situation with a lot of moving parts. And now at least we're in the position that, you know, we can bring it forward and, you know, get to a mutual win-win for everybody.
So Mr. Mayor, in that response. I mean, we had meetings up until recess, no liaison updates. This is just from feedback from residents that are following. And I'm not sure how the liaison, Mr. Remick, could have any information being that he didn't go to the meeting, the first one, until, I guess, today. And so what is the public to expect from the hundred and six thousand dollars that we're spending? Because the article is very clear. I've spoken with Mrs. Parker, I've spoken with the aquarium. They didn't call you guys. Somebody called them to tell them about this wonderful meeting. The paper has quoted that you gave a commitment that you were going to pause and it wasn't until I reached out to the manager to say, we're not pausing anything because two people can't give direction. It was also after I spoke with former Mayor, Mayor Sesums, who said he was going to be meeting with you as well as John Moss. So what I smell is politics at play and I feel that there's disrespect when you skip the liaison and he acquiesce, he is the one that you appointed to go to the meeting. You should have notified the public, you should have notified the city council because it caught all of us off guard. I don't want to throw anyone else under the bus, but I spoke with other people that were taken off guard. And I'm also interested in how Councilmember Lucci got in the article.
Well, Mayor, could I respond to that?
Yeah.
Since you invoked my name.
Yes, sir.
How I got into the article is that Stacy Parker called me.
Called me that morning too, at nine o'clock. I said I had no knowledge of the letter.
Why you weren't in the article if you're sorry that you weren't and jealous that I wasn't.
I wasn't. I had no knowledge of the letter that you guys have articulated. It's ridiculous.
Okay, Hutch and then Worth.
Well, sans this right here, this part here, I wanted to say, what I hope though, that we get part of this is, is that I found out in the afternoon at a briefing from a constituent that this was going down and that it had been in the paper. I'm usually an avid paper reader. I didn't see it in the morning. It didn't happen, but I just would ask moving forward that on anything like this, we have some sort of knowledge that something's going on. A phone call, phone calls, whoever, I, I don't care how we divvy it up. You take three, you take three, I take three, whatever. A text, I don't care. Just something to say, hey, this is coming around and it can be stated in a phone call that it's not an accurate article or however. But just so that we know, so that when somebody says, hey, I hear y'all are pausing, I was like, oh, wait a minute, I don't know about that. And then come to find out, we may or may not be. And I get all that, that part, sir. I just wanted to say though, that it is a bit off-putting to be sitting there with somebody and then give you that information and you're obviously caught off-guard. That, as the past fire chief, I don't like stuff like that. So that's just, just being honest with you.
Okay, let, let me just say this. You know, and then with due respect, you know, be assured this has nothing at all to do with politics.
No, not saying it did.
You know, the, the aquarium situation's been ongoing for a long time. And the thing is that what was recommended, there was an ask to pause. There would be actually no. There would be actually no pause as the council direction. The idea was to gather information so we can present to council because at that time, there was a cauldron of confusion going on. So we were, in effect, not disrespecting anybody, but trying to bring some order. And I think with the meeting that the Vice Mayor and Worth had this morning, now we have a presentation that we could give you, you know, in terms of what we're trying to get. This was, this was a lump of clay that we had tried to put together for a while. No disrespect at all. Come into a solution. Yeah.
When we realize, oh, this might be going south. That's, that's all I'm...
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, everyone. Just to clarify a couple of things. I have had conversations with foundation members one-on-one, and we also have met the city manager with the foundation before you, Mayor, and I think you have met with the foundation twice. So all of us in our own separate worlds have also had conversations with foundation members. So, I mean, I get it. We've been on recess, and we want to be transparent. And I think the newspaper article, with all due respect, did insinuate that we had committed something when we can't commit because you all, us as a body, have to make that decision. So I'd like for us to be positive moving forward. I think we can work together collaboratively.
Okay, Jennifer, and then Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have, I'm wrapping my mind around it. So I have a couple of questions. One is, is there a new proposed timeline for how we're moving forward? Because I know one of the bigger concerns was urgency around the animals. So if we've got tanks and we've got a building that needs to be upgraded, and we've been trying to figure out how to pay for it because all a part of it is we need to make sure that the marine life and the animal life is safe. And if we're now saying, well, hold on, we're going to pause, what is the timeline to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and being responsible and being good stewards of the aquatic life and the marine life and the animal life that's depending on us to make a decision to keep the facility running? So that's a question that I have. Another question that I have, so who is... I know that some members at this table were involved in the meeting, and who else? In terms of to get us to this decision?
Well, once again, we're at the decision point now.
No, not at the table, but outside.
Oh, no, but, you know, there were a bunch of ex parte, as Worth mentioned, you know, meetings with the foundation and everything. And, you know, and I think, you know, Jennifer, I think you really identify some of the immediacy with stuff. And I think a lot of that had to do, you know, when, you know, with the perceptions that were going on and maybe some of the misinformation that was going on there, where a lot of the, you know, the employees were out there, were concerned about their futures and everything. And so we're just trying to move in a fashion, you know, that comes to an outcome. But at least, I think, right now, and here we are, first thing back from the vacation, and the first liaison report I went to was, you know, getting people up to speed. Mr. DeHany, did you have a...
So, Mr. Mayor, to answer the question about the timeline, one of the things that was discussed today with Dan Peterson, the chairperson, and also Buffy Beer for the treasurer for the foundation, was that if council agreed with this request to stop and to work together to see if it's something that the foundation could take a little bit more responsibility on, that we would work together on an MOU that covers these rough terms that was just articulated to you all, that would then talk about deliverables and timelines, and that those deliverables and timelines will be shared with the city council and the foundation as well to give you all the information that you all need to ultimately make a policy decision.
We would do an MOU before we get the timeline?
The MOU would include the timelines in there.
And then we would agree on whether or not that works?
Yes. Nothing was done, no commitments were made that were, you know, going to violate the council's decision.
We have an email with the traffic kind of framework, so just so I can track along with it. So kind of whatever the idea is that you read, that way I can follow along.
Hey, can you send that out?
I will.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, Mayor Dyer. Again, page four, the public should be just very concerned with the way this process is going. It's messy. It's horrible for the brand. It doesn't smell right. Here's the outcomes that we told you we were going to do with this $106,000. I'm going to read them. No predetermined outcomes. Find the right roles for the three potential partners. This is what we committed to the public. What is the best operating model? None of these questions have been answered to city council members, just maybe the liaisons and the mayor. Then we're given a definite timeline for this $106,000. Develop terms and conditions of the MOU after one-on-one discussions with potential operating partners. I don't know, have we met with the potential operating partners? Because that would indicate a pause, Mr. Manager. Have we met with every one of the individual partners that we were told we were going to meet with?
So council, when council directed that scope, they sent us on two paths, right? Council says, continue talking to the interested private sector partners, but also to have conversations with the foundation to get a sense of what their issues were. And council appointed two liaisons for that, right? All those were happening contemporaneously. Conversations were had with the owner's rep, and the owner's rep is just a performance-based contract, so the city hasn't spent $106,000. I don't even think they're off the first phase yet. So basically, we talked to the foundation as requested with the council liaisons, and we also talked to the owner's rep and two interested firms. Conversations happened with all parties.
Okay, can we get a copy of the scorecards? We've committed to the public. We would have evaluation of partners with scorecard criteria.
So that phase didn't happen because we didn't get to that phase. So basically, right now, if council agrees with that, we will stop, work on that component, and then we will now focus on the scope that's being proposed for you all to concur with. And then we would work, staff would work with the aquarium foundation to put pen to paper on what that would look like, and then present that to you all before we move forward on that.
Okay. We have a lot of confidence in Lyndon. We just supported giving him a raise. He's indicated he won't be here until September 3rd. However, one of the next steps for the public, this is not for the council, for the public, was to finalize baseline financial models because it's going to be very difficult to move forward with any strategy without any financial baseline models. Integrated consolidated city and foundation resources. Can we get a copy of that? Or that hasn't happened either.
So from my understanding about it, is that that information, we need to fully and get a holistic picture of the city's finances, and we also need the foundation's finances. As part of them agreeing to do this work going forward, if council agrees with that, they will share that information so that we can give the council and the public and the foundation a full overview of the financials that takes to operate the aquarium.
So is it fair to say without the pause, they're not going to release the information? Because that's what they haven't done yet.
I can't speak for the foundation.
Okay, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of interest, and certainly, you know, emotion in the community surrounding this incredibly important asset. And, you know, regardless of, you know, what our posture is going forward, if we end up pausing, if we end up kind of, you know, going down the road that we were on before. You know, to Councilwoman Rouse's point, you know, we were, we were given a narrative that included some, some real dire circumstances. And whether, whether we, you know, pause to evaluate a more prominent role and a lead role for the foundation, or whether we, you know, explore a third-party operator, I think that the baseline questions remain the same, and I, and I think those are, that's where we're headed, regardless is this top-to-bottom facilities analysis, and then, and then a financial analysis to include the entire picture on the city side of the ledger and then the foundation side of the ledger. So, and the foundation is a, is a, is a third-party entity. So they, they're under no obligation really to, to, to share that information with us or the public anyway. So, so I, I think that regardless of where we end up, these, these two steps are critical to either outcome. And, and I think we should go about them, you know, post haste. And because we, we don't, we don't want a situation where, you know, the facility is deteriorated beyond, beyond our ability to reinvest in it.
Okay. Amelia?
Yes, I'm on the same line with Councilwoman Rouse. Because as we heard at the beginning, I still swing by to think of the animals, our water. I mean, that whole dire situation was given to us. But at least now, they're mentioning three areas, including state and federal funding, right? Looking at that part and a complete review. And we, with what we're asking for right now, before going any further, get the copies of what everyone's asking so we can look at it before making this decision. At least now we know they've narrowed down to three. So that we all see this before going forward because, as you mentioned, Chief Hutch, that is important for all of us to be aware. And I don't think what you all were trying to do was really lead us down a wrong path. We're trying to solve a situation that no matter where you go, I see some of the foundation people, and they see me, and they bring this up. I said, let's wait. At least if you have had some meeting, I know the manner in which you all went to do this. Everyone is in an agreement, but at least from what I'm hearing, you've come to some consensus. How do the foundation feel right now?
Yeah, go ahead, Worth, Mayor.
So, Jennifer, what you said, I felt the same way. I was so afraid we were going to see sharks on the carpet at some point because it was in such bad condition. But truth of the matter is, we really don't know, and the foundation really doesn't know the exact condition of the facility itself. So that's what this addresses. We, we need to get an assessment of the facility, what time was left on it, what needs to be done, and how much it's going to cost, and all of that sort of thing, because no one really knows. And then before, we didn't have an agreement on the financials. And they have agreed, the foundation has agreed now to come forward with their financials, and we can, we can put all these pieces together so that we can make more informed decisions. And frankly, first part of this also said that they're willing to amend their position that they've had before, and to be able to be a larger partner in the operation of the aquarium to be also good for the taxpayer. So I think when you have a chance to really reread this thing again, you'll see, even though it's compact, there's a lot of good stuff in there, and it's a positive thing. I don't think the public really wants to see us in a big fight with the foundation. And here, we were able to agree on some really important issues that I think are going to be very important for the aquarium to thrive and to do better. And we'll also go after, we've got some real corporate interest too, and get the corporate to work on some of the financial part.
Jennifer?
So this would be my final comment. With all due respect to the foundation, because I don't have a personal stake in it, how long have we been talking about this?
We first started about this in January 23, I think, with the first briefing. Yep, January 23.
So I can talk about that again?
Yep.
So this, the first sort of agreement, review the city's and foundation's financial information to get a more accurate financial picture of the Virginia Aquarium's operation. I don't understand why that's not ready today.
I think the concern, the issue, the reason there is that there are two sets of operations that go on in the aquarium. There's the city operations, but also the critical, another critical part about it, critical component of it is also what the foundation operates, right? So the foundation operates the exhibits and the animals. The foundation is under no obligation to share that information with us, right? The, they, in order for them to share that information with us, they would like for us to work together on this framework in order to provide that information so we get a clearer look on it. We can't get a full accounting of how, what it costs to actually operate the aquarium without their information. Is that answering your question, Mayor?
I don't like saying that.
I don't think that makes sense, but okay.
I understand.
Yeah, I get it.
I don't like it.
Okay, Chris, and then Worth.
Mr. Manager, each year, the foundation is audited per our agreement with the foundation.
Correct. So they are following accounting standards. So they do have an audit, and they have a clean audit. But there are information within, beyond the audit that we need to know to get a better sense of what is the full scope of operating the aquarium, right? So we know what it takes for the city to do its side of the aquarium, but we don't know the full scope of what it takes to operate their exhibits, to take care of their animals, right? That resides on the foundation's side.
Chris?
Can you verify that, Patrick? Because I'm being told by an individual that the foundation does not operate the exhibits and the animals.
The foundation owns the exhibits and the animals. We operate it, but they...
So that's, that's separate than what, that's different than what I just said.
But it's the accounting, right? So they, they pay for it.
But they don't operate?
We have the staff, so...
The city?
We, the city has a staff to see those operations. But they pay for the exhibits and pay for the animals, and purchasing the animals, and upkeep of the animals, and they also maintain some of the leases for the adventure park and also for the food and beverage contract.
I just want to be clear to the public, the foundation does not operate the exhibits and the animals. They own them.
Chris?
Two different things, okay? Also, for the public, because this is very confusing and chaotic, our objective, it said, our objective to spending $106,000, this is a due diligence exercise. You can't do due diligence without getting information. And again, I want to read from Lyndon, our auditor, that we just gave a raise because he does such a phenomenal job. Mr. Peterson further states in the attached, "We remain open to providing further information once the city of Virginia Beach, through a collaborative process, defines a clear and supportive path forward for the Virginia Aquarium." That doesn't look like a win-win-win, which we were presented to the public for the foundation, a true partnership between the city, foundation, and potential operator. So just so many concerns, red flags, and I'll end with his quote, "We certainly desire to work together in a manner that ensures the continued success, success and integrity of this critical community asset." It sounds like without a commitment from this council, which in the paper was given, to pause, there will be no information coming forward. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, let me put it this way. You know, this is good conversation. We had a habit. This was a tough one. Within public budgeting thing, there's a thing called program evaluation. Yes, you may start down one road, but once again, what happens when there are... The law of unintended consequences rears its ugly head. And then we find out, you know, certain things. You know, we were an assumption we had a three-legged stool, you know, with the city, with the aquarium and the foundation, but it was unequal. And so as we went along, we found that we had barriers to success. And the point is, though, that, you know, you know, let's realize that I think one thing, if we do have an agreement, is the success of the aquarium going forward. And once again, there were several roads, and we just have to figure out which is the bad road. We just had circumstances arrive that along the process that we just did not anticipate. And a number of the ex parte meetings that we had was kind of like before a game to establish what the rules and what the playing field is about. So when we do bring it to council, you know, there will be, you know, some semblance of order. Because, you know, without the pop or break background and without the type of, you know, building foundation, the answer is not apparent. But once again, the first thing back, we had the meetings, we're here in disclosure, we're talking about you. This is a very complicated, very complicated process. And as Josh said, there's a tremendous amount of motion in this. But be assured, let's be confident, we're going to get to yes and make it work. Okay, anything else at this point on liaisons? Patrick?
Is this something that council is okay with exploring? Basically, the request to stop working with the external third parties for alternative partnerships and to work with the foundation for them to, to evaluate with them what it could look like for them to take a more active role in operation and financing, and also to look at the financial conditions and assessment of the building, and to work collaboratively on identifying funding sources.
And to also know exactly how much it's going to cost, you know, because there was a big delta between the prices that were given. Jennifer?
So let's say we stop with the other operators, the private operators, and we go down this path of these three things, and we find out, oh, this isn't an option. We can't do two things at one time? Per the foundation, we can't do both at one time. Is that what the issue is? They're saying their condition is we can only move forward according to these terms? They're saying their condition is we can only move forward according to these terms?
We're, we're, contractually, we're a partner with the foundation. We need their side of the ledger to get a clearer picture of all the information so we can explore with the third-party firms.
I'm not comfortable with that because we don't know what we're agreeing to without, like there's, and then my thing is if we're, because government is slow, as we all know. And if we put a pause on something, go down this road, it doesn't work and then we got to start the whatever process again, that's how much more time on this pressing issue that we need, that we began over a year ago. So I don't like the condition of putting us, making us delay decision-making to say, well, only until we get you this at some point in time. I'm not comfortable. That's my position.
Yeah, we're, we're the thing with that, you know, the head of the foundation has indicated an interest to come in and talk to us pretty soon. Yeah, but once again, you know, this is a partner here that, you know, is, you know, that has raised a caution flag, you know, going forward and has some concerns. And this is going to, you know, like I use the thing of the three-legged stool, so, you know. But once again, I think if we bring him in, I think that would give council more clarity.
No matter what these things will answer some of those questions.
Well, just to your point, because you asked questions about how you should proceed. And I think it's important for us to get the information that Vice Mayor Wilson articulated here in writing. And then I'd also like to know, in terms of moving forward, are there going to be any additional costs to the taxpayers? And if so, what is that for transparency's sake? That would help me look at this issue in a broader sense and determine how to move forward.
Josh.
Mr. Manager, to answer your question, I, I don't think that, I don't, I don't think that either way we go, we're, we're, we're going to need this information one way or another. So we're, we're going to need a facilities analysis, we're going to need foundation side of the ledger. We go down this road, maybe the foundation and we together determine that it's not feasible for them to take the role that they, that they feel that they, that they want to. Maybe, maybe the entire thing looks completely different than what we're talking around the table about right now. Maybe we back into the third-party operator situation. But I mean, any of those outcomes, I think we still need the facilities analysis, we still need the financial analysis. And as long as we, as long as we have their acquiescence and, and they, meaning the foundation, as long as we own this stuff, the, the work product, so that we could use it later. In the event we need to pivot somewhere else, I'm totally fine with, with what, what they're proposing and what you're suggesting, just with the understanding that we don't know where it might lead. But we need to keep moving forward no matter what.
Yeah. Chris.
If there was no commitments made, we told the public on June 4th, we're investing $106,000 in all this work and the subject matter experts. And I'm a little confused, this is council liaison reports. And I know council ensuring you're big about not having things discussed that aren't on agenda. Maybe three people can put this on the agenda, but I can't support any pause. And I didn't support going down this path in the first place. We found, we find money for people all the time. We should just find the money to support the aquarium. But we've committed to this path, we've spent $106,000. We've brought in experts that are working. They don't have the information. We have our auditor, again, that everyone has a high level of confidence in. Not coming before the body until September 3rd. How do we make any decisions based on the letter that we still haven't received from the liaisons? To pause anything and we don't have a report from our auditor yet? I mean, it just sounds like somebody's trying to fast-track something into Mr. Peterson. I want to support the aquarium, just turn over the information so we can make the decision.
All right, now at this point, okay, Barbara, did you?
I, I want to go to other things.
Okay. All right, yeah, let's do that. But let, let's agree, you know, I think, you know, Jennifer's right, you know, a couple folks, let's at least go ahead and proceed with, you know, you know, getting the, the handle on how much, you know, the internals and what's going to be and some of the fiscal ramifications. So this way, we're at least still moving forward, okay? We can agree on that. Okay, Barbara.
Well, just very quickly, because I want to get the council comments, I would just say as far as the liaisons, the transition area ITA committee and other committees are working together. Our advisory committees are doing quite a lot to work on this comprehensive plan update. They formed a team with that committee, the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, the Open Space Advisory Committee and the Green Ribbon Committee, and they have been working diligently. And I think, looking at this comprehensive plan update, we have a, a lot to look forward to very shortly. And I just want you to know how much they have been working during this summer.
Jennifer.
So to Councilmember Henley's point, the Active Transportation Advisory Committee met yesterday. And I just want to shout out all the work they do. So not only are they working for Safe Roads in Virginia Beach, but there's so much cross-commission collaboration and like outside of Virginia Beach work that they're doing. So I just want to shout out some of the stuff that there are Virginia Beach, this commission in particular as a model. So Walter Camp as chair and then ATAC, they were representatives at the Virginia section of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Annual Conference. So these are, you know, transport, whatever that is, I don't know what it is. But they went there as these experts in bike safety and road safety and pedestrian safety and were able to speak to this, you know, transportation engineers. And it was our homegrown Virginia Beach commission that did that. So I want to shout them out. They're also, I guess already was today. So coming up, they're going to visit Norfolk. So they have their own bicycling committee and they're going to share with them the framework that they've been using in Virginia Beach. So I just want to say that Virginia Beach has been, and this committee in particular has been a stellar example of volunteers coming together and using their expertise to inform our decisions, but also decisions outside of our city. And then finally, some updates from the library. So a couple of things now, the library is lending citizen science kits. So for all ages, kids, but adults too. You can check out, customers of all ages can check out and take home kits to collect and classify data. So trees and nature and things. So if you're looking for something to do for yourself or for your family, check out the library and go to the desk to ask about the citizen science kits. Also, what the library is now offering, it's homebound delivery services. Everyone should have a, or some of y'all may have a copy of this in front of you. But this, Virginia Beach Public Library now offers home delivery services to Virginia Beach residents who are unable to visit a library for at least six months due to illness, injury or disability. So you can call the library and then they will help you identify resources and will deliver it directly to your home. So if you go to the phone number 757-385-0185 or you can email outreachrequest@vbgov.com. And then finally, the Virginia Beach library, or the foundation is doing a fundraiser this weekend, a mini golf fundraiser. So Friday and Saturday this week, if you go to the website, they have very family-friendly prices. I think it's $2 per person on Saturday or $10 for a family. And also taking place on Friday, the bookmobile is going to be up and running. So the ribbon cutting for the bookmobile that we paid for, they've been trying to get the shelves and everything together, it's together. So the big reveal will be this Friday and then communities can expect to see books on wheels in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Amelia.
I do have for the community, the Western Basin community, they're having their school supplies back to school this weekend from 1:00 to 5:00, right out near Enoch. So for any kids and any other vendors and resources will be there. I do have an update, as you know, Councilwoman Ross and I, the liaisons were something in the water. So we had some meetings and just to give you, yes, it's still going to happen the 12th and the 13th of October. Leading up to it, as you know, Pharrell has gotten a movie out of Legos and it's called Piece by Piece. And so on Thursday, October 10th, there will be the screening locations and timing and attendees numbers. They're not confirmed exactly those parts, but at least that will happen on that Thursday. And then on Friday, they're going to have a celebrity golf tournament at Red Wing Golf Course. And participants list has not been confirmed for us to know who all are coming. But they'll all be celebrities. And then they're still working on a plan to announce the lineup within two weeks. So everyone will know who's coming. And then the site plan right now, the south stage, Third Street, north stage projected Eighth Street. As you remember, last time was all the way to the 11th street, so the Third Street and the Eighth. The fence line will incorporate boatwalk, possible bike path, more square footers to follow to allow for pedestrians. And the road closures, they were closed part of Rudy Loop, the loop lot for lay-down and artist compound. Second Street Lot, production trailers and dining tents. Pharrell's compound will be on the First Street parking location. And the Fourth Street Lot lay-down area will be worked on. Proposed city property, south side of the boulevard across from Sports Center. Transportation, no planned shuttle operation. Parking lots at sports centers will be available. They have 1,098 parking spaces. We're still reviewing potential ride share, drop-off and pickup points. The HRT trolley will run the entire weekend. And they're still working a little bit on their communications by similar to 2023, provided by text. And oceanfront parks, no plan to activate the oceanfront parks at this time. Events that were previously scheduled in the oceanfront parks have been requested to relocate to another area. And virtual meeting with Something in the Water Security Team, Public Service and Safety, Public Works, CBB staff is scheduled, actually today at 10:00, that's security. So this is happening, we're really excited. We also expect to have some of them in some of the WNBA and NBA people as well as Something in the Water because a year ago, they worked on things that could do in the community. And one of the requests that they did fund was having the VAACC basketball court refurbished. So that is being worked on. The NBA sent 100, I think $105,000 for that. So that is going to be exciting. We're going to bring Ronnie back to do, because he's close, right here for the Atlantic Hawk. And the three times Olympic sprinter is going to come from Richmond, LaShawn Merritt. So that should be a good ribbon cutting. And that event will be on the menu from 12:00 to 5:00 because we'll also be doing a community ball festival. We'll send out invitations to everyone. But they're not letting us know, but I think we're going to connect from that on to the Something in the Water at the other weekend. That's it.
Chris, work.
Josh and Barbara. Something in the Water, and again, liaisons are doing a great job. I, I sent an email on June 4th asking for some information. It's now, I guess, in August and I know we're on recess, but once again, I'm just having trouble answering questions in the public. How does the hotel association get the dates before city council? We didn't know.
They didn't know about the date?
We, we didn't know either.
Right.
Patrick didn't know.
Yeah, I mean.
But the hotel association got it, I think, last week, the week before.
So I think they got their own staff and their own staff has their own conversations. So I think they were talking to resort stakeholders on what to expect and someone said something.
But it's our event.
It's not our event, it's Something in the Water's event.
Our money. Thank you.
Okay, Josh and Barbara, then we got to get to work first.
Thank you. Mayor, the Resort Advisory Commission, RAC, does meet every month and the four committees as well. And so you all read in the paper, two potential projects in the resort area, so I won't rehash those. But in your Friday package, you did get a letter from the Transportation Pedestrian Parking Committee, TPPC, asking for staff to create an RFP for microtransit at the resort. Right now, we have a proposal from HRT and we have a proposal from Freebie, but it makes sense in that and the RAC's opinion to open it up and have others potentially make proposals for that, microtransit.
Okay, that being said, we're scheduled for a vote next week, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, so the, from, before recess, council had a brief from HRT about two, about a microtransit program. And council asked us to bring forward the ordinance to fund the microtransit program. So if council wants to move in a different direction, we'll need to know fairly quickly. You know, either today or if council desires so they can defer the ordinance item next week on the agenda.
Should we defer the vote, folks? Your first.
As the other liaison to this, I want to be clear, the RAC is an advisory commission. I could read the description, but I want to read their letter and provide some input because again, once again, we've given direction to the manager. We've, we've had a discussion and then we give direction. And similar to ECSC, where we said no three times, then individuals reach out to individual council members, they bring it back. So let me read the letter. "The Resort Ramp Resort Advisory Mobility Plan adopted by the City Council on January 7th calls for enhanced shared mobility services in the resort area to improve circulation and reduce parking." Let's skip. "In support of this recommendation, the city funded a two-year resort area pilot." We just voted to not extend that. That's, we gave direction. There was support around the room to not continue to fund this. Resort area has, has to offer while reducing parking demand. All right, businesses, if they want to do a separate RFP, they can pay for this. We voted to not extend it after 10:31. Now, the RAC, who is an advisory commission, I want to read. This is what they're asking, two things. Not only do they want to have the opportunity to work with city departments, which they have, they work through staff liaisons, through city council liaisons. We can provide up-to-date information through monthly meetings and they bring in information. But they also want to, this is important for the public. They want to help prepare the RFP. This is an advisory commission that wants to engage and get involved with preparing the RFP, which is staff's job. We didn't vote to extend it, so I don't know why we would defer. And then HRT, who, we have the liaison here, Dr. Ross Hammond, you worked so diligently to get two locations, which, which we didn't discuss. We had a very lively discussion around the table and one of which is the oceanfront. So they're still not pleased, they're going to get it for another year through this, what we voted on. But now they want to participate in the RFP. That's not their role, it's not defined in their description. So I'm not in doubt, Mayor Dyer, so we shouldn't defer.
Okay. All right, I think at this point, why not just go, do you have something to say in the?
I had something to, I, I, well, I guess I do know on that, but I, I had something to say about Something in the Water.
Okay, real quick. Let's go ahead and do the voters thing and then we can get it straight now, you know, next week.
And I just wanted to point out that, that I had heard from some members from our Jewish community who are concerned about the Something in the Water being planned during Yom Kippur, which is the, the most, the highest holy day that, that, you know, that is observed in the Jewish religion. It's our day of atonement. We seek atonement for, for our sins and, and, and it's, and I wanted the public to know and I want, and I want everybody around the table to know that the Jewish community leadership understands and knows that, that it's not the city that drives these dates. You know, we had, we had, we as a city had absolutely nothing to do with selecting the particular date that, that the festival falls on. I know it was driven in part by, you know, the, the release state of a movie and probably some other factors, but, but, but there, there has been an opportunity for Jewish community leadership to, to engage in, in some dialogue with, with the festival organizers, opportunity for some education and just, you know, just, just, you know, mutual, mutual kind of respect and idea sharing. So, so I wanted the, the public to know, in particular, of the members of our, our Jewish community to know that, that it was not a city-driven decision in terms of the date. And as far as the, and you said deferring the, the transit discussion to another day, is that, is that?
Let's just go ahead and do it as scheduled and we'll get it straight.
Okay, very good.
Okay, Barbara and then, okay, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know about the microtransit piece. We are going for it with the what, with the, with the vote or?
What I've heard is I'm, what I'm, what I'm, I haven't heard council tell me to change from the direction you gave me on July 9th. So the direction council gave you on July 9th was after recess, bring back a funding ordinance to fund the HRT microtransit program. ordinance to fund the HRT microtransit program.
So in that discussion, in that discussion, I asked for certain information before voting on this, in terms of, you know, the routes, how beneficial it would be to the city as a whole, and those folks who have not been served by and with Freebie, how this will assist them in their transportation needs. And I haven't received that information, so before voting on something like that, I'd like that information, please.
So, did you have a comment on that? I'm sorry, Patrick, go ahead.
I think staff may have provided some response after that, but a lot of that is also needed to come from HRT, because some of those questions we can't answer, HRT would have to answer that. So I think there's still some things that we're still looking for from HRT, but councils did give me direction that coming off of recess, that we bring forward ordinance for y'all to consideration.
So I need to contact HRT to get the information I'm requesting.
I have council member Wooden, I think they are working on it, and they're going to give it to us when they.
It's going to be before we vote on it, because that's what I need to make an informed decision.
Work, did you have a comment on that?
Just a couple of things to clarify. This council, this body extended the current Freebie contract to end in October of this year, to give us, to fill the rest of this tourist season, also to give us as a body and staff time to create an RFP and make some decisions for next year, whether it be in the resort area or citywide. So I would ask this body to consider deferring this vote from HRT for as long as it takes to get those answers. We also have a proposal from Freebie, so I would ask maybe that the staff make a presentation on our options.
Yep. I would say for, if council wants to move forward with the Freebie presentation, Freebie proposal, we probably have to go through procurement process, because I think what's been extended is the pilot program, and I don't think we can extend a pilot program for much longer. So if council wants to explore the Freebie process, or what Freebie proposed, council would likely have to do a RFP request in line with what the Resort Advisory Commission is asking for. And then for the HRT item, remember, HRT is time-sensitive, right? So if we defer it, it's likely HRT needs to tell their contractor they're only going to do the program in Newport News, and they won't be able to do it in Virginia Beach.
Is that what you're saying? Because without it, it's not, we're not making an informed decision. There's some information that I need to have before I make that decision. And, I mean, it's, information was asked in enough time to get that information, so where is it, and how can I get it before I make this decision? Because folks are asking me about this program and how it's going to support them. I need that information to give to the public, and I also need the information before I make a decision.
But respectfully, council asked me to bring legislation for you all to consider after recess, and we're bringing that forward unless council tells me to do something differently.
Well, on record, I did not, because I asked questions about it, and I wanted those questions answered.
But, you know, don't forget, even if it's going to be brought forward next week, it'll be open, you know, for discussion, and then hopefully, you know, we can get the information we need, and, you know, maybe there will be a little bit more clarity, you know, this time next week. Let's get to Barbara, and then Amelia, then we got to get the.
Number one, I'll just say, I think the recess was entirely too long. I hope you'll revisit that, so we never do that again. That's why we've got so much here that we can't do today. This issue that I've become aware of is pretty timely, and it's very costly. And that is this change that we've had, I guess by VDOT or the Federal Highway Administration, of some of our projects having to have an environmental impact study rather than an environmental impact assessment, which causes a great delay in the time and an extremely great delay or increase in cost. First, and we were told earlier that the Nemo 7B project was going to have to have an environmental impact study rather than an assessment. We had been proceeding for years with a lot of data directed toward an environmental impact assessment, and that's how we were moving along, and that's how the project had been funded, and we were in the CIP to begin that project construction in just a couple of years. And that's an extremely important project for Sandbridge and folks who have to have access in that area. But now that project is going to be apparently delayed, and who knows what the cost might be? I'll use as an example, the Elbow Road project, which is getting underway this month, is now costing us $101.9 million just for that road. And if we delay these road projects any length of time, the cost is going to go astronomically. But in a report that I had been given before my forum in late July, which of course I couldn't bring to you because we were on break, apparently this change of environmental assessments to environmental impact studies is spilling over into other things as well. I see that our New Bridge Road intersection flood project is now being sort of incorporated into this environmental, this environmental study project, which is going to stop that, is going to cause it to be delayed. Probably the cost will get to the point where we can't do anything with it. I look also at the possibility of the Punggol Ferry project, Punggol Ferry Road project being, becoming an environmental impact study instead of an assessment. And if these things are going to be imposed on us, when we have been planning our funding and everything else according to another process, we're stopped. And I'm just thinking that we may need to ask for assistance from our federal delegation and our state delegations to look at these issues, because if we are going to have these major projects that we have had funded or planned funded, and we've been moving along in this one fashion, and suddenly somebody can come up and say, hey, wait a minute, we're going to make you do a full environmental study, then it totally throws everything off. And I think there's just too much going on here too quickly, and there's something that's happened to cause this to occur, and I think we need to look at it immediately. I don't think we can delay at all, because the same with the environment, with the Nemo Parkway, apparently they have been already meeting, and maybe that one's too far along. But on these other issues, if this is something, whatever is causing this to happen, we need to find out, because it's going to throw all of our projects in chaos from the ability to provide the service, provide the infrastructure, but also the funding. And so do you have some knowledge of what's going on here, and what we can do to turn this around?
So we briefed council on this in the closed session previously on it, and we have reached out to our federal delegation for assistance on it, you know, and, because some of them have worked to lobby for additional funds on it as well, but it's still the direction that we've received from the permitting and regulatory agencies, right? So I think Fish and Wildlife and EPA are the ones that have suggested and articulated to VDOT and the Army Corps of Engineers that they want us to do an EIS, and as a result of that, that's what the recommendation that came down from VDOT was, is that we're supposed to do EIS for this project, you know? So I don't.
Does the city not have some ability to question this, or to, because this would involve not only the Nemo project, if this is, if that EIS is going to be related to this, but also the mon-flooding project for the New Bridge intersection, which is pretty, I mean, that's pretty bad. We had some issues last week with all the flooding we had in the southern part of the city, a major stop on Sandbridge Road because of the flooding. If we can't fix these things, and we're being tied up with these studies, we're, we're just not able to provide for our citizens what we need to provide.
So I, in that briefing that we gave council, there is a lot of legal considerations and legal risk associated with it, and if we were to fight it, it would have been a prolonged legal battle that would have basically delayed the project extensively, if not longer than what it would take for us to go through the environmental impact statement process. So council suggested that it's probably best for us to go through the EIS process rather than risk the prolonged lawsuit that would probably take longer than the EIS process. And so we've already communicated to the federal partners that we would, that we'll concur with the EIS process rather than fight it, because to fight it would mean it would be tied up in courts with EPA, Fish and Wildlife, and also the Southern Law Center.
Well, I think we need to let the public know what's going on with this, because these are major projects, and I get calls, why isn't this being done? Why is it being delayed? Why isn't council moving forward? And if it's because it's out of our hands, then that's an entirely different situation. But I not only am concerned about the time consuming, but the fact that the inflation is going to get to the part, point that we're just not going to be able to provide these things. And this really needs to be discussed publicly, with the public, and I certainly want to be able to discuss it with the Sandbridge Civic League when I'm there next Monday night.
Thank you. Can we be brevity, please?
Yes. Very quick. First of all, to Councilman Schuman, one of the things about the Something in the Water, it was literally out of our hands. We were back and pressuring, because people needed to know to plan their events, their different things. So maybe in the future, when we do a year-long calendar, put that on the calendar. That way, we are aware that the Jewish holiday, what other important holidays are there, to be able to push back and say, well, this is what's going on. But we were not, you know, aware, and we'll be taking that into consideration. Regarding the HRT, I have an operation and oversight meeting tomorrow, so if you're able to give me the questions from Councilwoman Wooden, I will take that, so they can see it. And I was not aware that even though with Councilmember, where are you, Remick, that we had agreed, and the whole thing about the HRT stopping at a certain time in October, so this is all new about the ramp wants to do their own proposal, that wasn't something that was brought, you know, to us. So we really need to look at what's going on, that one hand is not informing the other, and that's not good, because the HRT, you know, they have certain deadlines, and we did have for the two new routes. And Councilwoman Wooden wants to know its impact for certain areas, and how come ramp is continuing to want mainly things for the oceanfront. So these are serious questions that need to be answered. So whatever you can give me, I can bring that back, so she'll see it prior to next week. And the same thing about ramp, we need to talk with them. HRT needs to know what this new plan, which wasn't on the docket before.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Mayor, a comment from District 8. Please ask today in the meeting. Public safety issue, who takes care of down light poles? Example, Lynch Shores and Virginia Beach Boulevard's been down for several months. Also damaged Verizon boxes. So, Mr. Manager, if you could just look into that. I know I answered their question.
If you could give me the constituents' email, phone number, we'll contact them, because it's Dominion and Verizon will take care of that, but if they give us a general's description, we can better communicate to them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor Dyer.
All right, thank you. Good discussions. Let's go ahead to agenda review.
Okay. Under the ordinance and resolutions, we don't have any speakers on any of these items. Is everything okay to be on consent, or does anyone have an issue with the? And then the planning, there is one speaker. I think this is going to be deferred.
That reverse?
Yes.
What's that?
Which item?
There's one planning item.
Mr. President, I was asking to defer that to September 17th.
It's not consent.
It might be on consent.
September 17th. There is one speaker. You have that one speaker, and then?
Okay, at this point, do we want to do some appointments, or maybe just wait till next week?
We'll just wait till next week.
Yeah, let's go ahead and wait till next week, okay? All right, hey, listen, thank you, welcome back, and lively discussions, really appreciate. Hope everybody had a good break. Thank you.[1766.82]